He's having some health issues, so call the robe.
All right. Bouchon?
Here.
Gillen?
Here.
Harrod?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Rutherford?
Here.
Shaw? Here. Spalter? We have a firm.
Okay. Would you rise and please join me in the Lord's Prayer?
Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses; we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. The Father is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen.
Also, join me in the flax of the Lord's intention, position, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, item one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I need to pull a couple of items tonight. For discussion. Those items are, um, two of the mayor's appointments. And that's Kevin Huddleston.
Okay.
And Mike Melnick.
Okay.
And the other is one F. Uh, the campus police jurisdiction.
Okay.
Over we approve the rest of the items.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second. Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any discussion? Call a question. I'm not working. Motion carries six oh. Item one, uh, E, I guess, uh, just going in order that they're on the agenda, Kevin Huddleston.
Um, I guess my question is, and I just need a clarification by legal on this, is previously, I was told when a particular chairman of a tribe had applied for a new committee that he couldn't serve and because of a potential conflict. And here we have a partner of the Finley and Cook, um, firm, uh, being asked to be placed on this support, uh, committee. Is there any conflict?
I apologize. Could you, was it the same committee where there was a potential conflict with the tribal leader?
No, it was a different one.
Okay. And I apologize, I'm having some difficulty recollecting the exact circumstances surrounding that, but the mayoral appointments are very discretionary to the mayor. I don't believe that that was a legal rationale for excluding, um, that particular person, if I recall correctly. I think it was just a perceived or a perception issue or discretion of the appointer.
Okay.
In that particular situation. I don't know of any, that there was any legal reason for that at that time. With regard to this appointment and, um, and the individual's association with the mayor's former firm, um, I don't believe that it creates on its face, uh, a conflict.
Okay. It is a business partner within the Finley and Cook.
Well, if my understanding is correct, and Mayor, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the mayor is no longer a partner with Finley and Cook.
That's correct.
He's retired.
Okay.
And so that distinction would be important there.
Okay. So there's no business involvement between you and this individual?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
What about the next one?
The second one was, I just noticed that the individual was from Prague. And I know we've previously tried to always keep within the city of Shawnee those individuals who are within our community to serve. So are we now accepting those that are outside of the city of Shawnee to serve on these different committees?
We are for this particular committee because it's the Vification Committee, which was, uh, you might recall, there were two committees. One was housed at the Chamber, where, and so the Chamber, of course, um, is broader, it's greater Shawnee area, so it would include, uh, representation from, from the county. And then we have a city committee that was, that was only city residents. And so some months back, when those, uh, when that combination occurred, uh, new standards were approved that specified the composition of that board, and it does allow for a certain number of board members to be, um, non-city residents.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Item F, do we need to vote on vote?
Uh, yes, we'll have to vote on each of the pulled items individually.
Should we go ahead and vote on the appointments?
Yes, because they fall under one of the...
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Call a question. Item one E passes five to one. Uh, item F.
As I was reviewing this, and I guess I just need educated, Chief Mason, if you wouldn't mind, um, and also, uh, legal. On item three point two, it indicates Oklahoma Baptist University police officers may complete law enforcement activities off-campus in a timely manner that began on-campus. So does this include like major crimes, or is this specific to civil crimes or educating?
I'm sorry, I think what this is referring to would be, say, there was a speeding violation that happened on campus, and they followed a vehicle, and they didn't stop until they got off-campus, then they would still, in a timely manner, finish that, and they wouldn't tell us to finish it, but they would finish it even though it was off-the-campus.
Okay. Who would have primary on that? Would that be them, or would that be city?
They initiated, they would have primary, but we would still have jurisdiction there if there were an issue that arose and they asked for our assistance at that point.
Okay. On item six point two, again, the question. Uh, Oklahoma Baptist University Police shall notify and defer to the city police investigations and/or actions concerning any major crime incidents in which Oklahoma Baptist University may be involved. Would the city be the primary on major crimes, or would that be OBU? Or both?
Yeah, what they're saying there is, is on major incidents, they don't have an investigative team, they have a patrol team, uh, for their police department, so we would take over the investigation at that point.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief.
That's it. Thank you. Would entertain a motion on item one F?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries six zero. Item two, citizens' participation. Uh, if you would like to speak, then approach the podium, tell us who you are, and, uh, and sign in. And talk fast, 'cause you only got three minutes.
Ready, set, go. Um, my name is Lindsay Goodson, and I am organizational lead with Blue Zones Project Potawatomi County, and I am here on behalf of the newly formed Food Policy Council, which you may recall that you all, um, put into motion with Resolution of Support Number sixty-five forty-eight. And so I would like to introduce the new members of the council that we have just formed. We just had our first meeting, uh, not this, not, it was a week ago today, so on the night. Um, the first who is here, is present, is Neil Lindenbaum, and he is with Paul's Place, and he's representing the restaurant industry. And then Holly Gordon, who is here, um, she is with Gateway, and she is, uh, representing the agriculture community, so urban agriculture. And then Ms. Barbara Lautermil, who is, uh, with Koka, and she is a rep, she's a representative at large. And then Jason Draper, who works with St. Anthony's Shawnee Hospital, and he is representing the hospital. And then Mr. Erickson is also on the, on the council, and he is representing the city of Shawnee. And then other members who are not present is, uh, Tammy Fleeman, who is representing Citizen Potawatomi Nation. Uh, Wanda Hayes, Haynes, excuse me, is representing McLeod. Um, Melissa Dennis is representing the county. And then Aaron Herman is another representative of the agriculture community. Dr. April Grace is representing Shawnee Public Schools. Doug Street is representing the food distribution, um, avenue that we have here in Potawatomi County. Daniel Matthews is representing the faith-based organizations. Gina Bundy, uh, is working with The Hunger Relief. Um, Amanda Brackeen is currently in as a SEDF representative, but that may be rearranged a little bit. And then Julio Sanchez is also representing, um, an at-large representation, so.
Thank you very much, Lindsay. I know you have your work cut out for you. Appreciate all the volunteers.
Well, thank you all very much for your support. We're really excited about the work that's before us, so thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Holly, can I say something?
I always... But it's good!
Okay.
This is good. Okay.
You gonna tell us about the dance on Saturday night, though?
Oh, my gosh. I'm gonna look back real quick. Kate, you wanna talk about the Blue Jeans Ball in a sec? All right. Perfect. So we're gonna let Kate Joyce talk about that.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I wanna talk about, uh, Third Friday is this Friday, and while it is wintertime and it's cold, the weather should be decent, and we may not have, um, opportunities for things outside, but I just wanna let folks know that at Studio 112 and a half, we will be making dream boards, vision boards, and, um, inviting folks to bring their favorite dish to pass. The Arts at 317 is doing a pottery wheel demonstration at six, seven, and eight, I believe. And at the library, Claudia Crowe is going to do a cooking demonstration with Blue Zones. And so there are things to do, and restaurants are open, um, so go to the lunchbox, grab a quick bite to eat, stay downtown, support our local downtown. Um, we're not going anywhere, we're excited to be here, and, um, thanks for your continual support.
Thank you, Holly.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm doing great, thanks. I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in our Blue Jeans Ball, and thank you so much, Commissioner Rutherford, for attending. Um, we had a blast, it was successful, especially for our first event, and, um, I just wanted to thank everyone who attended and let you know we will be making this an annual event to try and help support, support our funding. So, um, thank you so much, and I appreciate everything the city does for us at the senior center.
Thank you, Kate.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Going, going, gone. Item three, presentation by the city manager to employee of the month, Dean Castanada, with the street department.
Thank you. Steve, would you come up here, please? Thank you, sir. Mr. Castanada started his employment with the city of Shawnee in May of 2011, and, uh, he works in the street department. Uh, he started as Maintenance One, and has advanced to, uh, ma, and advanced to Maintenance Three last year. He currently operates the street sweeper truck and takes pride in his job. The department has received calls from residents, uh, numerous calls from residents complimenting, um, him and his work and, uh, and his interactions, positive interactions with the public. Uh, so for those reasons and, and many more, it is my pleasure, sir, to formally recognize you as Employee of the Month for Gaylord. Thank you so much, you. You want me to say something to fly?
I do my job as prescribed. I couldn't do without my fellow employees. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Steve. Congratulations. Item four, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located on the east side of the intersection of Highland and Bryan, Highland Street and Bryan Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential District to Planned Unit Development, Case P-01-18, applicant Landrum Group LLC. Uh, this item has been deferred by the Planning Commission. So do we need a motion to defer until action of the Planning Committee?
Yeah, I believe the next meeting for you guys will be the nineteenth, after the Planning Commission will take that up.
Move it to first of the nineteenth, March nineteenth.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Item five, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located on southeast corner of East Forty-Fifth Street and Hyatt Road from C2 Suburban Office Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development, Case Number P-02-18, applicant Bonray Real Estate LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. First case that we have here today, uh, the property is located east on Forty-Fifth Street, past Harrison, uh, generally the Hyatt residential neighborhood, uh, this is that northeast corner of that property. It's about four acres in size, and currently is owned C2 for office-type commercial. The use presented today actually does conform with the C2 zoning district. It's eight, uh, eight office complexes that's intended, really the purpose behind the PUD is that, um, the applicant has decided to go private with the roadway, so that requires cross-access agreements, shared parking agreements, and so forth. So simply just wrapping up some language there. With that being said, staff for the PUD recommends, um, recommends approval with two conditions, the first of which being minor corrections to the PUD design statement to assure consistency with the PUD plan map, uh, very, very minor details that just need to be corrected in the plan, and the second one, simply, uh, all other applicable city standards to apply. And since I'm up here, I'll just join the next, uh, the next case, it's the preliminary plat for this exact, exact addition. From the plating side, again, fairly basic concept here, the lots are, uh, meet all the intended size for the C2 zoning district. Easements are in place, so that staff also recommends approval for the preliminary plat with three conditions. The first one is pretty customary, it's final construction documents must be approved by the city engineer concurrent with final plat approval. And the second one being drainage plans must be approved by city engineer concurrent with final plat approval. And again, lastly, all other, uh, city standards apply. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just in, were there any letters of concern or people who indicated they had a concern?
No, ma'am. No letters of protest.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept, uh, the rezoning with the two conditions and the preliminary plat with the three conditions.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, is there a second?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to...
Separate them.
Yeah, we're gonna have to separate them till we've read the second agenda. So this would just be a motion, Commissioner Shaw.
For item five.
For item five. Approval of item five with two conditions.
Correct.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, attractive land described as beginning at the northwest corner of the northwest quarter of Section Five Township 10 North, range four east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, thence north, eighty-nine degrees, twenty-eight minutes, twenty-eight seconds east, a distance of six hundred and fifty-nine point five-seven feet, thence north, eighty-nine degrees, twenty-eight minutes, twenty-eight seconds east, a distance of seven hundred and thirty-seven point seven-one feet, thence south, zero degrees, thirty-one minutes, thirty-two seconds east, a distance of fifty feet to the true point of beginning. Thence south, forty-four degrees, forty-four minutes, fourteen seconds west, a distance of thirty-five point five-two feet, thence south, fifty-seven point one-one feet, thence south, zero degrees, three minutes, fifteen seconds east, a distance of forty-two point zero-three feet, thence south, sixteen degrees, six minutes, twenty-nine seconds east, a distance of eight, one hundred and eighty-one point five-five feet, thence north, eighty-nine degrees, twenty minutes, thirty-eight seconds east, a distance of five hundred and sixty-two point two-one feet, thence north, one degrees, fifty-three minutes, fifty-four seconds west, a distance of two hundred and ninety-seven point seven-six feet, open parentheses, measured, close parentheses, open parentheses, two hundred and ninety-seven point four-two of record, close parentheses, to a point on the south right-of-way line east Forty-Fifth Street, thence south, eighty-nine degrees, twenty-eight minutes, twenty-eight seconds west, a distance of five hundred and eighty-three point six-three feet, measured, open parentheses, five hundred and eighty-five point three-four of record, close parentheses, to the point of beginning according to the recorded plat thereof, rezoning said property from C2 Suburban Office Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Somebody was a little tipsy when they laid this out. Is there any further discussion?
We'll go back and add some.
Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Item six, consideration approval of preliminary plat for Shawnee Trail Office Park located at the southeast corner of East Forty-Fifth Street and Hyatt Road, Case S-01-18, applicant Bonray Real Estate.
So moved with the three conditions.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, conditioned upon staff's conditions. Is there a second? Commissioner Harrod. Any further discussion? Call a question. Aren't you glad you don't have to read that again?
Yeah.
Motion carries six oh. Item seven, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone located, property located at seventy-one oh nine North Kickaboo Avenue from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A1 Rural Agricultural District with a conditional use permit, Case P-03-18, applicant Nellman Broning. Uh, the, this has also been deferred by the Planning Commission. Would entertain a motion to defer.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, they're, they're...
March nineteenth. Oh, March seventh, I'm sorry. Moved by Commissioner Shaw, is there a second? By Commissioner Harrod. Did I get that right? Or were you both assembled? Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Item number eight, consideration and approval of final plat for Chicken Express Edition located near the intersection of North Harrison and Forty-Fifth Street, Case S-02-18, applicant Wilma Smith, Paul Pogue, two thousand twelve trust.
Thank you. All right. The Chicken Express Final Plat is located south on Harrison, um, sorry, south Forty-Fifth Street, west on Harrison, generally next to the, the U-Haul building, just to the north of this, this property here. Uh, if you remember back on November sixth, two thousand seventeen, the city did approve the preliminary plat, uh, with the following conditions: The proposed outlot located on the northeast corner be changed to an easement. Uh, no portion of the building shall be located more than three hundred feet from fire hydrants. Final construction documents and drainage plans being submitted to the city. Again, this was a one-lot plat, over generally one acre in size, uh, fairly simple final plat. Really what we needed to close out this particular project is part of this land that they're wanting to put the easements on, uh, is not their ownership, so getting those documents in place is what was necessary to come before you today for final plat. So with the three conditions I've listed, staff does recommend approval.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved with the three conditions.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, conditioned upon staff's requests. Is there a second? Moved, seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Item nine, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to approve the annexation of five hundred and six acres, more or less owned by St. Gregory's University and the Benedictine Fathers of Sacred Heart Mission, Inc., located in Section Two Township 10 North, Range Three East, and providing for its immediate effect and enforceability upon passage and publication through the emergency clause. This was originally deferred from a December eighteenth, twenty seventeen, city commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any, any additional comments that I did not make previously. I have, uh, received no correspondence from St. Gregory's University, uh, so I, staff would recommend that we open the public hearing and take any testimony from the audience before you consider the ordinance which is attached, uh, in your packet.
Public hearing is declared open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Public hearing is closed. Is there any discussion among the board? Your motion to...
I move that we approve ordinance of annexation of, of the acres owned by St. Gregory's.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending the boundaries of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by annexing certain properties located north of MacArthur, east of Acme Road, south of Forty-Fifth Street, west of Leo Street, Potawatomi County, and providing for its immediate effect and enforceability upon passage and publication through the emergency clause.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries five A's, one abstention. Item ten, discussion, consideration...
Yeah, there is an emergency clause.
Yes. I move we adopt the emergency clause.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to adopt the emergency clause. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries five A's, one abstention. Item ten, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve an ordinance amending portions of Chapter Five of the city code entitled Animals by setting the maximum allowed, allowable number of owned or possessed dogs and cats on a premise or lot basis and not on an individual basis, providing for codification, repealer, and severability, and declaring an emergency.
If you have any questions in reference to that, I'd be glad to answer them.
What exactly does this mean for the animals, Chief?
Well, basically, the, the way it was written initially is, uh, like in the case of the dogs, it was allowing, uh, two dogs per person at a premise or residence. So actually, if you had ten people living in the residence, you could end up with twenty dogs at that residence, and it was okay under the current statute, which wasn't initially the way it was intended, and was somewhat contradictory with our kennel licensing statute.
And this will correct that?
Correct, yes.
So how many is the maximum number per lot now, for work?
As of right now, it, it's, I think it's still two per, per person, but this would change it to two per premise, and then there's also the kennel licensing, if you want more than that.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move it through.
Commissioner Harrod. Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any discussion? Read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending portions of Chapter Five of the city code entitled Animals by setting the maximum allowable number of owned or possessed dogs and cats on a premise or lot basis and not on an individual basis, and providing for codification, repealer, and severability, and providing for emergency.
Call a question. Motion carries six zero. Is there a motion on the emergency clause?
I move it through.
Commissioner Harrod. Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Call a question. Motion carries five A, one abstention. Item eleven, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve an ordinance amending part of Chapter Twenty, Section Eighteen of the city code regulating petty larceny generally by defining the offense as property taken from another in an amount less than one thousand dollars, and aligning with State Statutes Twenty-One OS seventeen oh four, and providing for codification, repealer, severability, and providing for an emergency.
This will basically just mirror the current state law with our city ordinance, if there's change in the, uh, amount from five hundred to a thousand on the petty larceny. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Over we approve.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Second by Commissioner Shaw. Call the question.
Sorry, I'm gonna read that in real quick, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending part of chapter twenty, section eighteen of the city code regulating petty larceny generally by defining the offense as property taken from another in an amount less than one thousand dollars, and aligning with the state statute twenty-one O-S section seventeen oh-four, providing for codification, repealer, and severability, and providing for emergency.
Thank you. Now call the question. Motion carries six-zero. Is there a motion on the emergency clause?
I move.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries six-zero. Item twelve, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve an ordinance amending chapter twenty, section one oh-five, regulating truancy and replacing with language that correspondence, corresponds with the state statute that regulates the same, providing for codification, repealer, and severability, and providing for emergency.
Yeah, again, this truancy ordinance will just mirror the state statute that is changed to read, uh, of a child five and up, and it replaces the language of a child six and up.
Actually, Shawnee schools have really been working on that truancy problem, so, um, it's gotten a lot better lately, so, yeah, I move we approve that change.
Commissioner Harrod. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any discussion? Read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending chapter twenty, section one oh-five, regulating truancy and repe, and replacing with language that corresponds with the state statute that regulates the same, providing for codification, repealer, and severability, and providing for emergency.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question.
If I may, could you educate me on why that we included the language of aligning with state statute twenty-one O-S, uh, subsection seventeen oh-four, yet we didn't do a citation in the, uh, chapter tw, from chapter twenty?
Yeah, under the state statutes, if I recall correctly, and I.
Do we need that?
I will double check. We, we absolutely don't need it. Under the state statutes regarding, relating to truancy, I believe there's multiple statutes, whereas the other one was a single statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Call the question. Motion carries six-zero. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action to appoint a subcommittee.
We need to do the emergency.
Oh. Is there a motion on the emergency clause? Since you brought it up.
So moved.
[laughing] Is there a second? Commissioner Harrod. Call the question. This group's not the lowest common denominator, but it's getting close. Motion carries six-oh. Item thirteen, discussion, possible action to appoint a subcommittee of the city commission to review proposals submitted by firms interested in serving as the city's insurance consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. At the, your December eighteenth meeting, you authorized staff to, to solicit responses from qualified firms to serve as the city's insurance consultant. Those proposals are due on, due this Friday, and, uh, given the, um, importance of this decision and the financial implications, uh, staff wanted to, uh, include this item on your agenda, uh, should you decide to, uh, select, uh, two or three, uh, members of a subcommittee to work with staff and, and other, um, parties to, uh, to review these proposals, interview firms, and make a recommendation back to the full body, uh, in February, hopefully in February. Certainly don't have to do this, but if you, if you, I wanted to make this an option for you, uh, if you don't feel like it's needed, then staff will proceed with, uh, the interview process and, and bring a proposal, a recommendation to you, uh, on its own. So I just throw it up for consideration and, and, and your, uh, decision.
This is a, this is a huge item in the city's budget, and, uh, and I, for one, do not feel like I have the expertise, uh, to properly evaluate these items, so it, Ju, Justin and I talked about it, soliciting some help from other H.R. people around the community that deal in this area extensively to help us evaluate, uh, any proposals that we have, so that's kind of the genesis of this item. Are there any questions or further discussion of, of Justin?
Justin, do you have?
I agree with you, because, uh, I've served on the insurance committee for a number of years, but I'm not in a position where I could, uh, you know, one of, like, to talk about the self-insurance and stuff like that, I'm not in a position to have an expertise in that area, so I would agree with you.
Do you have certain individuals in mind that you would like to serve on this committee?
No, ma'am, in terms of, no, i, in terms of beyond the commission, I, I do not. I, as the mayor mentioned, there has been some discussion about, uh, soliciting input from other, uh, H.R. professionals in the community. We've got some expertise at the, at the city as well. I think that can be done kind of administratively. Uh, what I would hope for tonight is just some direction, uh, and possibly a motion and a vote on, on perhaps, uh, you know, any commission members that would like to get part of this process. Uh, we're a little bit in a time crunch because we have the proposals due on Friday, and then it's about three weeks into your next meeting, and so we've got to review those, interview firms, and provide a recommendation to you, to you either at your first or second meeting in February, because in another three or four months, we're going to be, uh, you know, needing to make a decision and have open enrollment for the new fiscal year, so, uh, we'll have to, uh, this consultant will have to hit the, hit the ground running, and we'll have to make a decision in the next thirty days approximately.
As, as a commissioner that's, uh, not, uh, hadn't served on that group or would like to be involved, and I think it could chance for them to do that if they wanted to volunteer, but, uh, like I say, I've served on that insurance committee probably for ten or twelve years now, so I'd recommend that if some of the newer commissioners wanted to do that, they could volunteer to do that.
So when are you planning a meeting next, Justin? I heard that you said that you were on a time crunch, so maybe if the commissioners knew when you needed this project completed, then they could either step up or step back.
Yeah, well, I think, since your next meeting is not for three weeks, so if you don't make a decision tonight, then we can't schedule interviews with these firms until, until we know if any of you want to serve on a subcommittee that's, that would be present during those interviews. Um, so, um, some of you may want to think about that, and I, I respect that, uh, so if we need to push it back a little bit, and, and you want to make this decision on the fifth of February, then that's fine, we'll schedule interviews after that date, and, uh, just try to compress the timeframe after that as best we can, but if you, if any of you feel compelled to serve now and you want to make that appointment tonight, then I think you're free to do so.
If we put together a group, let's, uh, of say, five people, where we had two commissioners and three people from the community at large, uh, when would, when would, to supplement the city staff, when would you like to schedule those interviews?
After Friday.
I know, after Friday.
I mean, I think, uh, you're right, uh, it'd probably be early February before we could schedule those interviews at the, at the earliest.
Okay. With that said, uh, I, I would, the chair would offer a motion to, uh, appoint a five-member committee, uh, we would solicit, uh, interests from commissioners if they would like to serve on that, selecting two and three members of the public at large that are, uh, versed in this area as a supplement to city staff in order to interview on the proposals.
I have a second there.
Is there any discussion?
Any chance you'd be willing to identify those commissioners tonight?
Uh, I'm willing to serve if no one else wants to. Uh, we are talking about embarking on, on somewhat of a self-insured, uh, program, and it is complicated, and certainly would, is going to require a little bit of homework if someone wants to serve, and that's great.
I would volunteer to do that.
Any others have any interest, I will step aside gladly, but I'm happy to do it if someone else wants to do it. Commissioner Shaw and, and I will serve on that, and we, we will get together and select, or get some suggestions, and, and I would guess these are people that we're going to call and ask them if they would serve, much like we did on the, on the audit solicitation committee. I'm thinking of the hospital and, and some of the other bigger outfits around town, they may be busy and may not have time to do it, so if they don't, then we're, we're no worse off, so. You second?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question.
Could, could we read back that motion? I mean, what do we have in there?
I have a motion to appoint a five-member committee, solicit interest from the commission, selecting two and three members at large to, um, supplement the staff.
And that's, I, I think that, I think the two commissioners have been identified to be Mayor Finley and Commissioner Shaw.
Okay.
Is what's being voted on to be approved.
So can I amend the motion to be to appoint, um, Mayor Finley and Commissioner Shaw instead of soliciting those commissioners?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason that we need to be at large is that there's.
Yes. Call the question. Motion carries six-oh. Thank you very much. It's a big step, and I appreciate you stepping up to help us with that, Commissioner Shaw. Item four, acknowledge the sales tax report for January twenty-eighteen.
Um, sales tax, um, for December was, it was okay, it wasn't great. It was one million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, we were up, um, fourteen thousand from last year, and we're down, we're below a little bit than we had budgeted for, but, um, the way the calendar fell this year, the big boxes pay from, uh, December fifteenth to January fifteenth. It's going to be February is going to be our big one, because we had two weekends and before the holidays, so keep your fingers crossed. Um, overall, the revenue, which we'll be, discuss a little more tomorrow, um, our total revenue is, is about flattered last year and just a little bit above two thousand and fifteen, so, I mean, the other revenues are coming in as strong as we had hoped, but we're watching it closely.
Okay.
So Cindy, when you said that it's a little less than last year's, how much are we looking at, then?
Oh, it's point three-nine percent less than.
Okay.
So it's flat.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Thank you. Question?
Thank you. I just have a few items, uh, to report on my monthly, uh, report, the full, uh, of which is, the full copy's in your packet. You have to answer any questions, uh, after I've concluded. Uh, I wanted to start out on a, on a real positive note with the hazardous waste cleanup, um, process that we, uh, that you all authorized and that we had on November eighteenth. That was a really great success. The community collected about twelve thousand pounds of hazardous, hazardous waste, and I want to thank the Kickaboo Tribe and the Abson T. Tribe and Central Disposal again for their work on that, on that endeavor. The total cost for that was approximately twenty-five thousand dollars, which was fully covered by the grant funds provided by the Kickaboo Tribe and the donation, uh, provided by the Abson T. Tribe, so there was no out-of-pocket expense to the city at all for this, uh, for this event, and, uh, we're hoping that we can, uh, make this an annual event. We've already met and discussed it, and looked at ways to partner again, uh, hopefully in about a year's time to, uh, to do that again. Uh, this Friday is the annual police banquet. If you haven't got your tickets, we still have some available, so, uh, please see the chief. Uh, of course, tomorrow is our workshop from eleven A.M. I hope to wrap, wrap it up by about four or so tomorrow afternoon, uh, at the expo. Of course, that is an open public meeting, and, and, uh, members of the public are welcome to attend as well. The traffic signal at one-seventy-seven Hardisty, uh, there's been some information in the paper, newspaper, in both newspapers about that recently, and several of you have asked me about that. That was, uh, a key delivery for that project was scheduled to be delivered, uh, yesterday, and that, uh, was not delivered. It has been delayed and is, uh, still in Texas. Uh, it is supposed to be delivered on Thursday, and if it is delivered on Thursday, uh, we're hoping to have that signal up and operational again on Friday, so, uh, just ask, uh, ask that everyone bears with us just a little bit longer as we repair that signal. That damage, that was damaged by a, a, a large truck. We have been compensated fully for that, uh, expense, which is, which is positive, but I know that the time delay is, is certainly frustrating. And lastly, I was, get lots of, uh, emails and calls from the public, but, uh, one last week stood out, and that was a member of the public that, uh, emailed me to, um, to thank the staff that, that deals with water breaks, the municipal authority staff, and, uh, his comment was that he had went to sleep, uh, that night on a cold, one of our cold nights that we've had recently, and, um, he thought that there was a water leak out front, and by the time he woke, woke up in the morning and, and came out, the repair had been made, and, and, and the hole that had to be dug was already filled with gravel, and, um, uh, so he was sending his, uh, his thanks for that, and, uh, if you've driven around town lately, you've noticed, especially with this cold weather, we've had a lot, a lot, a lot of main breaks, and, uh, the municipal authority staff has had to be out there in the cold and the terrible weather, and then the street department staff's had to be out there after that to, uh, to patch the street and to, uh, and to, uh, pull the repair, the, repair the surface. I just want to acknowledge those employees and, uh, the work that they do, uh, in these trying conditions. With that, you have to answer any questions that anyone has.
Do we have any idea whether there's fewer accidents with a four-way stop than there is with the stop fly down there, do you know?
I don't. I don't know that it's been operational enough to, uh, collect that data at this, at this point. Those, those accident reports are, are public information, and, uh, um, we can, we can definitely collect that data, uh, and, and look at that. Oftentimes, four-way, four-way stops can often be safer, and if there's a, an accident, it's a lower speed accident. That intersection, because of the traffic, uh, volume though, it probably doesn't warrant that long-term, and a signal, I think, is probably the best option there. Certainly during peak time especially.
I catch a little slack from people out of town, more specifically, if it's going through, if they don't like to slow down very much, so I understand.
Any other questions? Thank you. Commissioner comments? None? None?
I would like to, uh, comment about the, the sign down there, a lot of people, more specifically, it's kept in the calm areas, but, but I know that they've been fussing about it, and I tell them, well, we just have to, you can't predict what piece of equipment you're going to have to have to keep that on hand or try to do it, and when you order it, it just, it's billed as the, as you ordered, so it takes some time for it to come in and, and get in place and everything, so, uh, appreciate everyone's understanding on that, because it is a, uh, slowdown for them, I'm sure.
Just want to say that the fundraiser I attended Friday night at the municipal authority for the senior center was, is a lot of fun, it's good entertainment, and I hope it raised some money, and I heard you, heard you say it's going to become an annual event, and that's, uh, that's, that's really a good thing. Hope it, hope it continues to grow.
Um, I'd like to just say that I'm glad that Domino's is there, and I just encourage individuals to use this new business and to, to get out there. It's a, a great opportunity to get off that interstate and go right in there and be served timely and quickly and, and, um, in a clean, very clean, um, environment. I noticed that Avedis, uh, may be breaking ground, I guess, over on our street, finally is the word. I'm glad to see that. I hope they build out and, uh, get their facility built over there. I'd like to personally, uh, thank Chief Kishir's staff recently. We, I'd like to echo a statement that Justin had indicated earlier, that staff are so committed, and we have such good staff, and he had two individuals come out at around one o'clock in the morning, because I had a water leak, and, um, they just were incredible. They did so much, uh, for me in, um, stopping the water and, and, uh, making sure that it was all taken care of, and I certainly appreciate those two gentlemen. I'd like to encourage, um, some thought along these new sidewalk projects, to having some lights placed along there, especially along Brian Street. We have so many young kids out there and young families, as well as elders that are out there, and lighting would certainly assist with that. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. I know the cold weather stresses the infrastructure and the staff and police and fire, and I know Justin mentioned streets and, and the water people, but I know the, the police and fire are stressed just as well, and thank you guys for stepping up and holding, helping us through this, uh, very cold time, and I hope it doesn't last too long.
I, I would like to make, we did have, uh, my wife had one of her greenhouse catch on fire, and I sent the chief, there was the chief, that, uh, they actually did an excellent job of getting the fire out and cleaning up and everything. I was just. getting a fire out and cleaning up and everything. I was just, went over the next day, and I was just shocked that there wasn't even more damage than there was, and I figured there'd be water damage and everything else, but there wasn't. So I do, I want to congratulate the fire department on a job well done. Thank you.
Work is progressing on the fire station. We don't get any calls when there's work. We just get calls when there's nothing going on, so. Paper needs to get that. We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority Agenda. Item one, consideration, consider approval of the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries five a's, one abstention. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
This meeting is adjourned to.
That's the name of the person you want to work with?
Yeah, we can, Monday.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority to consider approval of the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Bouchon.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries five a's, one abstention. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Lisa, if there are people around, you would like to call, ask the citizens committee, just shoot me an email or something. I'd like to call Chuck Stillings, we can borrow their HR personnel. I know we have a big fine.